All right, let's go ahead and call the city council meeting for April 25th to order. Let the record reflect the starting time of 4:21. And with that, Clerk Swope, would you please take the role?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Wood?
Here.
There are seven members present at quorum. Councilmember Spitzley is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right. Do we have anybody that we need to remember during tonight's moment of meditation? Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pat Day, the former Lugnuts general manager from 10 years ago or so, he passed, I'd say, suddenly. He was 45 years old. He had a wife and young children, and he passed away suddenly, and I hope we will remember him. Those who've been here remember Pat. I knew him a little bit, but I hear he's a wonderful gentleman, so I hope we'll keep him in our memories. Thank you.
We certainly will. Are there others? All right, if you'll join me in a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
(inaudible)
Okay, we are to the order of special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute and rec-
We have minutes.
No, we don't. We have a tribute and recognition of workers Memorial Day.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President.
Sorry. And Mayor Shore.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So as a skilled trades worker, I want to recognize the importance of job site safety, worker safety in our community. And with that, I'd like to bring up Jim Dravistan Seri. He is the Assistant Business Manager of IBW Local 352 and the Financial Secretary for the Greater Lansing Labor Council. Okay, so I'm going to read this resolution. This is near and dear to my heart. Whereas every year on April 28, communities and workers around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job. Whereas, in 2020, the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics estimated that 4,764 workers were killed by traumatic injuries on the job. On average, more than 90 workers died every week, and roughly 13 workplace deaths a day. And 130 workers were lost through fatal workplace accidents in Michigan. And whereas, it is appropriate to honor the memory of the courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured, disabled, and have died as a result of workplace accidents. And whereas, we remember those who have died in workplace catastrophes, suffered occupational-related diseases, or have been injured due to dangerous conditions. Whereas recognition of the integrity of Michigan's workforce and its achievements on behalf of the economic growth of our state is necessary. And whereas, the Lansing City Council wishes to pay tribute to the workers who have died, been injured, or disabled workplace accidents, we honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce and call for increased worker safety. And whereas, the Lansing City Council renews efforts to seek stronger workplace safety and health protections, better standards in enforcement, and fair and just compensation. And by rededicating ourselves to improving safety and health in every city workplace, now there being resolved that the Lansing City Council does hereby proclaim April 28, 2022, as Worker Memorial Day in the City of Lansing, and encourage City of Lansing residents to become educated and informed about programs, services, and opportunities to support a safe work environment. With that, I'd move the resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor Shore, do you have anything to add?
I don't want to repeat what the councilman just read. That was very eloquent. But we certainly, here in the City of Lansing, recognize our workplace safety, the importance of workplace safety, keeping our workers safe. We've had too many that have died or been injured, and this is tremendously important. I've been able to do this with Jim and with others every year since I was first elected. We talk about this every year. We should talk about this every year and remind the public how important it is, how important the jobs are that our workers do, whether it's city or not, and reminding everyone the importance of workplace safety. So I'm not going to read my whole thing, but I will add to this now. Therefore, I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2022, as Worker's Memorial Day in Lansing. I encourage all Lansing residents to reflect on the importance of workplace safety and the call for increased workplace safety standards. Thank you, Jim, for championing this. Thank you to all of our labor friends and workers in the city and everywhere.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to say, I appreciate the city council, the mayor's office for recognizing the safety of our workers. Through the years, as the mayor said, there's workers who've lost their lives, got seriously injured, and also disabled. And so, with this recognition, it goes to the workers, their families, and their colleagues. So, thank you again on behalf of the Greater Lansing Labor Council. Thank you for this. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we have a presentation on the ordinance to amend Chapter 1060, licensing of waste haulers.
Sure. Councilman Daniels.
All right, so tonight we have a public hearing on an ordinance of the City of Lansing to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinance amending Chapter 1060, Section 1060.9, to add specific requirements that an applicant for a waste hauler license must provide to the city and to create reporting requirements for the applicant to provide the Public Service Department every six months. We also received letters from Granger and the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we have Lori Welch, the Sustainability Manager, here for a presentation.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Welch, for being here. We appreciate it. Absolutely. And so, I was actually part of the committee when we asked you to come down and actually present before we had the public hearing. And so, we're going to turn the floor over to you just to talk a little bit about this amendment request, why it's needed, why it's necessary, and then we'll certainly entertain any questions if we have those at that time. Thank you.
Do I have to push this in? Okay. There are several different reasons why we submitted a request to amend the ordinance, and it's basically just to provide the City of Lansing with some very basic standard information that we feel is pretty important to best manage the program. So, we're looking at just asking licensed waste haulers in the city to provide us with basic route and collection information, what they charge for services, and that kind of basic information. But more importantly, for my work, it's the data. So, I would like to have either weight or volume of waste collected in the city, and this does a couple things for us. It helps us to calculate a diversion rate, which by that I mean how much waste we divert from landfills by way of recycling and composting. We can't figure that out if we don't know what's being collected waste-wise in the city. We also need that data for our greenhouse gas inventories, and that helps us in the fight against climate change. Waste is one of the major sectors that we look at for data to calculate citywide emissions. And again, without that data from waste haulers, we're simply just guessing. So that's why we requested the amendment.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Councilman Spatafor?
Lori, thank you for keeping an eye on this effort. What value to the information you're trying to glean does the rates charged by the companies that we're licensing bring to the table?
That's just basically for our department to be able to compare what services are being charged to our residents in the city and comparing our services to them and different other service providers.
Okay. And then, it's my understanding, this report on the loads and number of waste, the stuff that you're requesting in the ordinance, is already required by state law on an annual basis? Is that, am I wrong on that?
It is definitely encouraged for us to collect because I do report this information to the state, and there are a lot of people in the industry who are looking for cities to report out. Historically, we've just been able to guesstimate, basically, because we don't have the information. But yeah, it would be really valuable to the state as well.
Is the frequency important that it's six months, or is once a year sufficient?
I think once a year we could manage, but I think we put in for every six months just so that we could kind of start to look at that a little bit more closely and compare it to what we are collecting in the city as well, just trying to manage it because some of the reports are more frequent than annually.
What's the ultimate end goal for that? I mean, I know you want to get a handle on diversion from landfills, but what's the ultimate end goal with this?
Basically, just to have, you know, really standard operating procedures handled so that we can look at that data from year to year, or from quarter to quarter even periodically, and measure and manage better this sector. The waste stream is, it tells us a lot of valuable information, and it helps us manage the department a little bit more efficiently when we have the data and we don't have to guess.
Do you have a report like this from our department?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of tired and whispering. Does our department refuse to report this information?
Yes, the City of Lansing does report out what we pick up, but because there are private waste haulers that operate in the city as well, we just don't have a complete picture of the waste picked up in the city.
Thank you.
Vice President Wood, then Councilmember Brown.
Hi, Lori. Not sitting on the committee, my question to you would be, I know in previous things that we've dealt with waste, we have brought Granger in and had them sit down at the table, and other waste haulers, but it's mainly been Granger who's come to the table and sat down with us. Has they been part of the discussion? Have you had communications with them at all?
Just a couple of voicemail exchanges, basically. I think we talk regularly with the folks at Granger for a variety of different reasons. We've requested the information over the years and haven't had too much success, so we have talked a little bit about our need for that, but not too much beyond that.
I realize this is only the public hearing, but I think I would request the committee, when it goes back to committee, that Granger be brought in to the committee meeting, and any other waste haulers, the invitation go out to them as well, just so that we are making sure that we're being proactive and bringing everyone to the table.
Sure.
All right. Are there other questions, comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Brown and then Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, President Hussein. I agree with Vice President Wood, so I concur with that. And my question was going to be the same, as well as, is there best practice, you know, across data that's captured on a local level, or is this additional, you know, to that?
I'm not sure if I understand the question. Are you asking if it's currently collected?
When I'm looking at the ordinance, the information that you want to capture from the waste haulers, is there a best practice when it comes to sustainability? Because that's what you're saying, is you're saying, I need this data to make us better. Is there a standard across the United States for local, you know, partnerships with sustainability and those type of things, or?
It's fairly standard. When, for instance, we worked with the agency who helped us conduct our greenhouse gas inventory, it was very surprising to them that we didn't have that simple, basic data. Most other communities they work with can readily report that out. So I do believe that there is kind of a standard for that.
Okay, is that something you have looked into, or just based on what?
I would have to look and see if there is a standard across the board, but my belief is that it's just, most municipalities have that kind of data reported to them and just have it readily available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, I was going to echo Councilmember Woods. We have a couple, we have a few letters of concern from some folks in our community about the ordinance changes. Since April 30th is the deadline for application, we're going to miss it anyway, so I would encourage the committee to maybe take a little bit of time with some of the folks that are going to be impacted by this. And could you provide us also, like, you said it's standard practice that other municipalities request this information. Are there municipalities in this region that request that information that you could point to as an example, and maybe perhaps their ordinances could be instructive?
I would have to look into that to give you any specific examples. My guess is that yes, but I would have to, I can't name them here.
That would be very helpful, because some of the concerns here, I think, are very legitimate that have been expressed to us by, Granger specifically, there's a letter here from them regarding they cross paths through municipalities, as it makes sense, because you're not going to just stop at Lansing and move on.
Right.
That if there is a community around here that they also serve that has a similar ordinance, we did this with, it's not like to like, but with the scooter regulations, we wanted to make sure that if we did have an ordinance in place, that it was mirrored in both communities so that the affected parties were not having to deal with two different sets of laws. So if you could, I would appreciate if you could ask the consultant to provide some local governments in our area that have this data collection in place.
Yeah, I will absolutely look into that. And I could say, too, that we're happy to take an estimate or work with the hauler to see, just to get the best information that they have available, because we do understand that they do cross barriers.
Well, yeah, and I think, one of my major concerns of this is the report that's required in Sub 6 is very open-ended. The application is very specific, but the report that's required is very open-ended and basically left up to the department to decide. So while I trust all of our department heads and whatnot, I think it leaves it open for a huge interpretation and some potential overreach.
All right, further questions, comments? Okay, so in the lead-up to our committee meeting, we'll also make sure that we know who is collecting here in the city, who's actually licensed to collect here in the city, so that we can, in an informed manner, invite folks out to that committee meeting so we can have some of those conversations. In any event, Ms. Welch, we really appreciate you being here. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is Community Development Block Grant Five-Year Consolidated Plan.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. We have with us representatives that are going to, that were hired to work on this plan, consultants, and Barb Kimmel is here. Again, every year, part of our budget is approving the Community Development Block Grant budget before we pass our other budget. Included in this will be the five-year plan that is also passed when we pass the budget. So with that, I'd ask Ms. Kimmel to take over at this point.
Hi, I'm Barb Kimmel, the Development Office Manager, and I'd like to introduce Jason Smith. He's with Wade Trim, and he's the consultant that we've been working with to develop our five-year plan. And we'll let Jason take over.
Thank you, Barb. Mr. President, Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having us tonight. As Barb mentioned, my name is Jason Smith. I'm a professional planner with Wade Trim. I've been working on community development, work throughout the state of Michigan and the country for about 17 years now. Back in the fall, the City of Lansing hired Wade Trim to assist with this five-year consolidated plan. And I just want to quickly go over a summary of the plan. It is a couple hundred pages long. I've condensed it into, I think, a couple or so pages of, I think, some of the important points. The plan is available for public comment on the city website, but today I wanted to provide just some background and some information contained in the plan before tonight's public hearing. The City of Lansing Five-Year Consolidated Plan is a requirement of the U.S. Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The city is a recipient of CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, Home Funding and Emergency Solutions Grant Funding, ESG. These are annual allocations provided to the city through HUD, and every five years, the city is required to develop a five-year plan in order to provide a blueprint for decisions that will be made over the course of those five years related to those three grant funds. Just to give you an idea of the dollar amounts, we're talking about the 2017 through 2021 plans, so our previous five-year plan. The city received an average of $2 million per year in CDBG funds, $720,000 per year in home funding, and $171,000 in ESG funding. Now, those all do come from HUD, and they are three different grants, but they do three different things. The CDBG program is typically more broad. It's public improvements, housing, public service programs, blight elimination, economic development, so a whole host of different types of projects. That's a short list, but I think captures most of the types of activities that you're able to fund with CDBG funds. The home grant is housing-specific, development of new housing, and the rehabilitation of existing, and also providing assistance to residents for affordable housing such as down payment assistance and so on. And the ESG grant, specific to homeless prevention and services. So the city, on an annual basis, does make decisions specific to those three grants and what types of activities will be funded through those three grant programs. You know, throughout the five-year consolidated plan process, one of the major components of this is our public participation and consultation process. We did develop this plan in large part through the pandemic. We're at the tail end of this plan. We are required to submit this summer, once final allocations are received, which we hope to have in the next couple weeks. So it was a challenge with the public participation and consultation components of the plan. We conducted most of those through the fall and the winter. A host of different meetings, both virtual, in-person, and a public survey that was provided, community survey that was provided. Over 30 agencies were consulted, housing agencies, nonprofit agencies, Public Housing Commission, Continuum of Care, which is a host of homeless providers. We received 134 responses on our survey, which was provided in both English and Spanish, online and hard copies. We hosted some brown bag meeting luncheons, which were specific to discuss economic development and housing. City staff met with neighborhood groups. We had community meetings that targeted all the wards of the city. Those were virtual meetings. And ongoing consultation with the Continuum of Care and the Lansing Housing Commission. Through that, through those meetings, there were some common themes that came out of those, which we call the high priority needs, which are identified within the plan. And those high priority needs that were identified were affordable housing, senior and youth services, neighborhood cleanup, code enforcement, blight elimination, public improvements, job training and educational programs for youth and young adults, housing rehabilitation for both renters and owners, homeless shelters and traditional housing, and expanded mental health programming, ADA improvements, homeless prevention and services. So those were identified as our highest priority needs throughout this process. And you'll notice if you do review the plan, that that'll be located within the Priority Needs section of the plan. We then developed goals that would help address those priority needs. And we have five overarching goals that are contained within the plan. Now, these are broad goal statements that capture four main categories, specific to affordable housing, homelessness, provision of public services and other needed services, and public facility and infrastructure improvements. And then finally, program administration, which is staff time in order to implement the plan and administer the grant programs. Now, on an annual basis, the city, as we mentioned earlier, makes budget decisions on how to accomplish each of these goals, which are all tied back to those high priority needs that were identified through our public participation process. And through the 2022 program year, which begins this summer on July 1st, the activities that have been proposed as part of the 2022 action plan are the home rehab program, emergency repair program for both homeowner and rental units, blight removal, public service activities, which includes youth and senior services, neighborhood cleanup, community gardens, and home repair classes, economic development and business and technical assistance, so technical assistance for businesses in low and moderate income areas and business owners who are low and moderate income, down payment assistance to assist lower-income individuals and households in becoming homeowners, homeowner housing construction and homebuyer repairs, and then assistance for community housing development organizations. We call them CHODOs for short. And then finally, the smallest grant amount, which is the ESG program, which the city works collaboratively with the local COC, the Continuum of Care, to provide homeless and prevention, and street outreach, maintenance of the HMIS system, which provides data and tracking for homeless populations within the area, and shelter operations. So we're here tonight just to provide you with that background. This is our final public hearing in the process. Our next steps after tonight will be to await HUD's final allocations, which we're awaiting. This is late. Normally, we get these a couple months earlier than now, but we anticipate by mid-May, we'll have those final allocations, at which time we'll finalize the plan and bring it back to this board for final adoption.
All right, thank you. Ms. Kimmel, do you have anything to add?
I do not, but we're happy to answer questions.
All right. Do we have any questions? Seeing none. Thanks so much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are going to pull forward as a presentation item number 13, the appointment of Brian Baer as a member of the Capital Area District Library Board.
Sure. Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. So this evening, we are going to, I apologize, we're going to appoint Brian Baer as a City of Lansing member of the Capital Area District Library Board for a term to expire April 15, 2026. Oh, sorry, I moved that, please.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor. I do believe we have Brian with us, so should this be approved, we can actually get him sworn in tonight. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brian, why don't you come on down for us? Thank you.
(inaudible) I'll have you raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a member of the Capital Area District Library Board.
As a member of the Capital Area District Library Board.
According to the best of my vote.
According to the best of my vote.
Congratulations.
All right. All right. We certainly appreciate your service to our community, Mr. Baer. With that being said, we are to, comments by council members. Do any council members have comments tonight? Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President Hussein. I just wanted to say thank you to the Lansing South Church of Nazarene. They did the "I Love My City" event this weekend, and it was a huge success. I mean, a lot of volunteers just showed how much dedication and how much love they have for our city. I mean, they tackled multiple projects, beautification projects, all over the City of Lansing, and I just want to congratulate them and thank all those that helped out. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comments? Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. On the same front, the East Side Neighborhood Organization had a cleanup at Homer and Hosmer this past weekend, as did Eastfield Neighborhood, and it was just great to get out, meet everybody, and see how dedicated they are to their neighborhoods. It was awesome.
All right, thank you. Others? Seeing none. I have a few. First, I want to thank the Southwest Action Group. They actually put on, obviously, this was Earth Day weekend, but they put on a day of service at Pleasant Grove and Homes, and it was a, it really was a tremendous event. I want to thank the Southwest Action Group, but I also want to thank some folks that supported the Capital Area Housing Partnership, supplied a number of tools, so we certainly appreciate that group. Councilwoman Wood, always quietly supporting, but she was very, very generous financially, and so we certainly appreciate her continued support of all things Southwest Lansing. Also, Mr. Christopher Strokowski with Ferguson Development was a huge, huge source of support for that particular cleanup, and we appreciate him as well. We want to thank- We want to thank the Departments of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement for their support. And then, really, the individuals that came out. We had probably close to, throughout the day, 30, 35 individuals, which allowed us to not only focus on litter pickup, but we were able to take care of the flower beds at 1910 Food Market, Drake's Market, anybody that's been by the plaza that is southwest of Pleasant Grove and Homes, maybe over the last year, have noticed that we were able to fund the removal of the jersey barriers. They had really become kind of an attractive nuisance in front of that plaza. We now have actual legitimate bottlers, but we also have concrete planners, so we were able to take care of the planners. We were able to engage in some maintenance of the town square, as well as Beacon Park. So, again, thank you to everybody that was involved in that. That was fantastic. Secondly, my next constituent, I shouldn't say my, our next constituent contact meeting in Southwest Lansing is scheduled for May 14th, so that's the second Saturday in May from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. We will be at the L. Frieder Schmidt South Side Community Center. That is at 5285 Wise Road. What we do is we actually meet in the Sandy Allen Room, so that's right off of the parking lot, very accessible. Again, South Side Community Coalition, the hyper-focus of this meeting is going to be economic development, particularly as it pertains to South Lansing. And so, we are actually going to have Carl Dorschimer with the LEDC on hand to help engage in some of those discussions, so we certainly hope that folks will get out and take part. Third, Vice President Wood and myself, we fielded a number of concerns over the last couple of weeks with regards to the Lansing Housing Commission and the scattered site housing. So, there's a report out there, and a few years ago, we maneuvered on our end to allow the Lansing Housing Commission to essentially own property in their own name. And we understood, you know, what they were looking to do moving forward. There were certain promises that were made to this group, and there was a report a couple of weeks ago, that they are looking to sell all 242 of their scattered site homes. And so, we, there were a number of concerns with regards to the number of folks that qualified or maybe didn't qualify to actually take over those homes in terms of tenants and remaining in place, and there are additional questions as well. So, what we did is we actually invited Mr. Doug Fleming to come in, and we actually had asked him to come in tonight. He was unable to come in tonight, so we are going to have him in on May 9th. So, we certainly wanted folks to know that we are working to create, you know, some measure of transparency. We have a number of questions as well. Mr. Fleming has been kind enough to agree to come in, I may not, to answer some of those questions. And then, lastly, I want to congratulate my colleague, Mr. Brian Jackson, who actually qualified for the Boston Marathon this past Saturday. He ran a time of, not, absolutely. I think I saw 3 hours and 27 seconds. Is that correct? Okay, my knees hurt just even hearing that number. I ran one marathon, and it was at a pedestrian, like, 5 hours and 5 minutes, so that is incredibly impressive. But no, seriously, we know the time of, you know, the time and the effort that goes into that, so congratulations, my man. All right. Clerk's vote.
Thank you, President Hussein. A couple of things. First, I want to thank and congratulate Jessica Behrens, who's been our council intern here for the past several months. In the next couple of weeks, she is graduating from Michigan State University, and she will be starting a job with State Representative Helena Scott, so she's moving onward, and we're happy to see her, and glad that her experience here was helpful to her future. And then, nextly, I want to just talk a little bit about the upcoming school mileage election, May 3rd. If you've been issued an absentee ballot, there is still time to get it back, although at this point, it's a little bit risky to put it in the mail. You know, it might get here in time, but it might not, and we have to have it by 8:00 PM election night, so I would suggest that if you haven't already put it in the mail, that you may wish to drop it into one of our 15 drop boxes that are conveniently located across the city, or bring it in person to one of our offices, so. And then additionally, same thing if you still want to get an absentee ballot, I suggest that you come in person to our office, because at this point, we legally still mail them out through this Friday. It's just not practical for people to actually get them and have time to return them, so I suggest that you try and do it in person if you're, if you have not already requested that ballot. For those who are voting in person on Election Day, the polls are open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. We have done some pretty major precinct consolidation. We are finding that between 2/3 and 3/4 of folks are voting by absentee ballots, so to save resources, to save funds, and election workers, and other costs, we are doing a pretty heavy consolidation, so all of those people who are relocated to a different polling place have been mailed a postcard, so you probably received that today, or maybe tomorrow if not, so keep an eye out for that. And then, if you just want to confirm where you're voting, you can contact my office, 483-4131, or you can go to lancingvotes.com, and there's a place to look up your specific polling place for this election. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience that has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of it. And seeing no one jump up, we'll go ahead and move forward to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, as well as show cause hearings. So, show cause hearings is the green sheet in the back, and that's related to 3601 Deerfield, if you received a notice. Legislative matters includes items 7 through 26 on the agenda, although item 26 did not come out of committee and will not be considered. But it is still on the printed agenda, so council will let you speak on it. And then, in addition to those items listed, the council will be reconsidering and doing an amendment to the resolution that was passed at the last council meeting related to the Congresswoman Alyssa Slotkin's community funding requests for the City of Lansing. So, all of those items, if you want to speak about them, it is the blue form in the back with Jessica can help you get that filled out and turned in, and we need you to turn that in in about the next minute. And while folks are still doing that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to do a few recognitions, and then a few things coming. First, I want to thank the Exchange Club. They recognized Officer of the Year Dylan Rust, who's our CPO downtown. They recognized the Firefighter of the Year Kwang Lee, and then a variety of other businesses, so thank you to the Exchange Club. I want to congratulate Caitlin Kavanaugh, who this body is aware of. She was just appointed to the Lansing School Board, and I'm very excited for her leadership. Want to thank everybody who attended the funeral for former Mayor Tony Benavides. Very difficult, but wonderful gathering of individuals. It was just, you can never really go through all of the things that he did for this city, but the funeral was very strong, very powerful, and I thought it was a very good send-off for our former mayor and councilman. Many of you hit some of the cleanups. We had cleanups all weekend, and they were great. Swag was wonderful, and I saw Councilman Hussein was there, appreciate it. You know, Councilman Daniels talked about the East Side ones. Councilman Garza talked about the "I Love My City" and the great things that South Naz did. Also, downtown had cleanup, so we had all kinds of cleanups, which is nice, because it was 81 degrees, and certainly, when the snow melts, we see some of the negative activities that have taken place, when people come through our city and throw things out of their cars. So, thank you to our citizens for stepping up. Thank you to our Neighborhoods Department for providing the resources. As a reminder to everybody, our Neighborhoods Department has trash bags, has grabbers, and they can provide them to neighborhoods. So, if you have neighborhood organizations, feel free to get with our Neighborhoods Department. As a, in addition, I'll remind everyone that yard waste collection begins this week, has started today. As I said two weeks ago, as a reminder, the first week or so, the volume is large, so we tend to fall behind, so we might be a little bit behind, but we ask people to still put the bags out. It does continue to be weekly, so don't forget to put your yard waste out. And while we're talking about that, it's a, I will place a reminder to everybody out there that we have to take care of our yards. Our departments have come up with a very cool graphic, well, I don't even know where to point it. We will send this out to council, but it's a reminder that grass can't be more than eight inches. You have to remove your weeds and overgrowth, and you don't want to have a violation, so let's take care of our yards and make sure our properties look good, and we'll be sending that out to, as a reminder, because we'd rather remind folks than have to cite people. What else? Congratulations to Capital Hippie, which is a new store that's open downtown. If you like tie dye, you will love Capital Hippie. Congratulations to Lakla, who had a wonderful scholarship event where they honored two of our, two of our Eastern School graduates and one of our Everett School graduates. Two others, congratulations to the South Side Community Coalition for their birthday event, and they put solar panels on their building, which was wonderful. They, I think on Saturday, they said, what, they generated 60 kilowatts of power, and they only used 20, so that's good news. Of course, it was a sunny day, but we're looking forward to the sustainability at that building. And finally, congratulations to Terry Terry, who folks in Old Town know very well. He won the JAM Award, which was a Jazz Award, so it was very cool to see him recognized. And last but not least, I highly recommend everyone to watch the "They Call Me Magic" special on Apple Plus. My wife and I watched it in various parts, and it really shows Lansing in a great way. It shows our national, international presence, but they did a really good job recognizing Lansing, and it also highlights two of our leaders, Joel Ferguson and Greg Eaton. When they showed up, I was stunned, but my wife and I, that was really cool to see them on this special for Magic Johnson, in addition to the Johnson family, who many of us here know pretty well. So, I'll end there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. Item 6, make safer demolish for properties of, owners of property at 3601 Deerfield Avenue.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is the second public hearing on this property. The property was originally tagged September 3rd, 2020. The estimated value of repairs, and this was at the time that the demo board heard this, is $71,916. If you remember from our last meeting, we received a communication from our building safety inspector who said that the, before issuing any permits, that there needed to be a architectural and engineering analysis done on the building. Also, council members, in your red folder are pictures that were taken today of that property, showing the rot on the trusses that are there. So, with that, I would open it up for our public comments.
Okay, and I do want to acknowledge that we received some photos from the property, interested party in the property, that there weren't enough copies for the whole council. We will make sure that the Committee on Public Safety has those for their meeting, and also make them part of the public record. And we have one speaker, Ivan Darling.
I am here on behalf of Mark Dell. He is the next-in-law of the current owner of the property, who is deceased, and I just want to say that we have been trying, we've been working on this property since February. We have put on new roofs and everything. We have done architectural plans, and we have had a site architecture come in to approve certain stuff on the roof. If I remember correctly, the roof is the main issue of concern here, and the roof is pretty much just waiting to be done. We're just asking just to continue working on this and improve this property. And the current owner is also deceased, so we're also working on getting the property through probate at the moment. Do you have any questions for me?
Sir, this is your time to provide public input.
Okay.
You have two minutes and 6 seconds left.
We have, we have been working on the property, and because of the city, the inspector telling us to stop, we have went and got architectural plans, and we're trying to move forward, and we're just asking that you allow us to. And that's all I got to say. I would give my time to anybody else.
Thank you very much. And on the referral of the show cause hearing.
Public safety.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that includes items 7 through 26, as well as the Slotkin community funding requests. Items 6 through 10 are public hearings. I'll briefly announce those, and I believe some council members will give better explanations. Item 7 is an ordinance amending Chapter 1300 Marijuana Operations, and I do want to acknowledge a letter from the Lansing Regional Chamber of, oh, no, sorry, wrong item. Number 8, Fourth Amendment to the Lease Agreement with Lansing Shuffleboard LLC. Number 9, Community Development Block Grant Five-Year Consolidated Plan. And number 10, the Ordinance to amend Chapter 1060, the Licensing of Waste Hauler, and for that one, I would acknowledge the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce letter that will be made part of the public record.
All right. On number 7, in consideration of an, sorry, ordinance amending Chapter 1300, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This particular public hearing would align the zoning requirements that are in the ordinance with our current zoning act. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. And this was a recommendation that came to us from the clerk's office, based on the fact that when we approved the form-based zoning code, that when the ordinance was written, it did not take into consideration that particular form. So, those are the changes to that ordinance.
All right. Number 8.
Number 8 is, as it says, an amendment to the lease agreement with the Lansing Shuffleboard LLC. We had a presentation that was before us at the last council meeting when we set the public hearing.
All right. And do you have anything to add for number 9, Vice President Wood?
No, I think it was quite self-explanatory just a few minutes ago.
Sure. And for number 10, Councilman Daniels, anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
All right. Clerk's vote.
Okay, we have Speakers Charles Hauser followed by Joel Kahn.
Good evening, Mayor Shore, Council President Hussein, and Vice President Wood, and all other members of the council. Thank you for listening to what I have to say today. My name is Charles Hauser. I'm the Community Relations Manager for Granger Waste Services. Granger Waste Services, as you may know, is a fourth-generation waste and recycling company located right here in Lansing, Michigan, since 1966. Today, I'm here to talk about the proposed amendments to Chapter 1060, Section 1060.09, the License of Waste Hauler Ordinance. I'll quickly read the small amount of added text, but it actually has quite a bit of weight to it. So, it says, "Every person required to obtain a waste hauler license shall make application to the city on forms provided by the clerk's office. The application shall require the following information: expected weight, volume, and description of materials handled, collection schedules, specific routes, and current rates per service, as well as other information, as that will enable the Department of Public Service designated to determine whether the applicant, if licensed, will serve the public in compliance with the requirements of this chapter." It continues on, so, oops. On to line 5, we have, "All licensed waste haulers, thank you, shall report to the Public Service Department every six months the actual weight and/or volume and description of material handled in a format prescribed by the department." So, I'm here today because, obviously, as a company, a private company, we have some concerns with the local government asking private business for pricing, specific routing... concerns with the local government asking private business for pricing, specific routing, and other things mentioned within this ordinance. The City of Lansing has a hauling company, I would not necessarily company, but is a direct competitor in the industry, picking up residential waste and recycling. Recycling is something that the city just does on its own, as part of the ordinance for the city, but in terms of waste, this is a huge, could have a huge effect on many companies that come in here, private companies that are licensed. Many live or die by price, and if we're giving that price to competitors, which this information will become public, that could change the complete outlay of the competitive market that we are able to use today. So I did submit a letter, and I will read that as quick as I can. Oh, it has 16 seconds. But as mentioned, we do have concerns with the pricing and specific routing, as Ms. Welch mentioned, or as Councilmember Spatafor mentioned. We are, we do go in and out of the city, so it is hard. It takes a lot of administrative information to provide the details requested. We're happy to do that on an annual basis. Biannual is a little bit of an issue, but the letter was sent to you. Thank you so much for reading that and your.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we have Joel Kahn, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hello, my name is Joel Kahn, Vice President Freeland Industries. Brian, congrats. It's awesome, dude. Awesome qualifier. All right, so first, I want to start off with just touching base on, everything that Charles said is 100% accurate. I want to thank Councilmen Spatafor and Wood for their comments, because the verbiage does leave a lot of room to open interpretation. So for Freeland Industries, one, we don't want to be tied up in the wording of a waste hauler, because we're not a waste hauler, okay? We buy and sell marketable commodities that are on exchange trades. So in here, where it says collecting, transporting, delivering commercial recyclable materials, what does that mean? You know, we, does that tie to, you know, industrial accounts? So for instance, just to kind of lay out how it works, is we have industrial accounts where we collect nonferrous and ferrous metals and paper, and we also take other recyclables as well. So, you know, we don't want to get wrapped up into that. Other than that, you know, Part 175 statute from the state already requires us to report our tonnages. We already do that on an annual basis. So that is information that they could get from the state. But other than that, Charles already touched on everything that I would have touched on, but I just kind of wanted to speak to what Freeland's concern is. Thank you.
Thank you, and our final speaker is Loretta Stanaway.
Well, due to the discussions recently about the sale of Lot 50 to a developer and about the potential sale of the property on North Cemetery, it led me to do a little bit of researching in the city ordinances, because it concerned me that I wasn't hearing any appraisal having been done for the Lot 50 sale, or even actually, you know, it's a little early to think about an appraisal on the lot at North Cemetery, but at some point, that would become an issue. So I did some research, and in the city's codes of ordinances, in Section 8403, it requires an appraisal before negotiation for the purchase by the city of a parcel of real property. There is no likewise consideration for the sale of real property from the city to another purchaser. It does not make a whole lot of sense to me that you would require for an independent appraisal before buying property, but not require an appraisal before selling property. That just does not seem logical to me. I would think that you would want to have, before you negotiated for the sale of any property, or for the purchase, that you would want to have an appraisal, or at the very minimum, an open bid process. So I think this is something that, as a council, it could bear some looking into. It may be that at some point down the line, there should be a proposal to change the city ordinances, to add the requirement for an appraisal before selling property. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was our final speaker. So on the referral of the public hearings, number seven, the Marijuana Operations.
Committee of the whole.
Number eight, the Lansing Shuffleboard.
Committee of the whole.
Number nine, Community Development Block Grant.
Committee of the whole.
And number 10, the Waste Haulers.
City operations.
And we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the codified ordinances by adding Chapter 256, Sections 256.01 to 256.03, to create the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion DEI Advisory Board, to provide for its composition and function and to define its duties. It's read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Today, we're here to vote on passage for this ordinance to amend and add the Advisory Board for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. This came as a result from the Mayor's Racial Justice Equity Alliance as a recommendation for action to implement a plan. This board would basically be responsible for advising the administration, different city department heads, even council, as it relates to various matters submitted before it that has to deal with equity, diversity, and inclusion. So we've had this public hearing. We've took it back to council. There were some concerns, basically, that has to do with how will work or assignments kind of be put into place there, and who can bring those, and how they'll be handled. And ultimately, we passed it out, for the most part, because there's questions that may not be answered until we see the work, and the work has been requested, and we would move it for passage.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none, Clerk Swob, would you take the role, please?
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley. Yes. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Is there a motion for immediate effect?
Would you like to move for immediate effect, Councilman Jackson? All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. First of all, item 12 was already acted on, so was item 13, and we will be pulling item 18, which is Act 8, 2021, the Real Estate Purchase Agreement. And then I will speak to the rest of the resolutions before us. There's the appointment of Steve Bonnet for the business owner, member of the North Grand River Corridor Improvement Authority, for a term that will expire on June 30, 2024. There's the reappointment of Anthony Mullen as an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light, for a term to expire June 30, 2025. The special assessments for Glenburn Commons for trash and grass abatement. There is the liquor license for Ellison Brewery and Spirits LLC, and for a new microbrew license and a taproom outdoor service, Sunday sales, catering, dance, and entertainment permit at 1314 South Washington. There is the Lot Split 1, 2022, application, and this is for property between 3220 and 3330 West Miller. Another lot split between 5,000 and 5,000, 5022 Christian Road. Membership consideration by the mayor for the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Advisory, and the setting of a public hearing for a noise, special noise waiver for Hoffman Brothers that is for the Combined Sewer Overflow Project. It's Martin Luther King and local streets near the Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., from May 14, 2022, to November 4. And that public hearing would be on September, or September, May 9, correct? All right. And then there is the Act 4, 2022, Red Cedar Redevelopment, Street Dedication, and then last, the Community Fund for the East Side Neighborhood Organization for their Summerfest. With that, I would move those.
All right, here is a motion for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
Okay, we're to resolutions for action. We have item 18, Act 8, 2021.
Sorry. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So Act 8 of 2021, so the Economic and Development and Planning Department is proposing to sell the city-owned and administered parking lot, commonly referred to Lot 50. This lot is in the Stadium District at the southwest corner of East Chiwasi Street and Pier Marquette Drive. Lot 50 was once a productive resource for the city. However, the lot has seen drastic reductions in use levels. As of February 2022, only six permits were leased by individuals. The proposed buyer has only, has the only, is the only entity that was interested in the lot. The potential of bringing a headquarters downtown Lansing with workers down there as well. So this lot may continue to be used as surface parking, and the proposed buyer has committed to maintaining public parking after 5:00 p.m. The suggested sale price was 125, and with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, there is a resolution on the floor regarding Act 8, 2021. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries, six, two, one.
Okay, next, we have the reconsideration of Resolution 2022-098, the Congresswoman of Listen Slotkin, community funding.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. As you remember, the mayor brought us at our last meeting a resolution for supporting community-funded projects that was forwarded to Congresswoman Slotkin. One of the items that was listed in here had to do with EMT training. That was something after her office received it, that they were not able to find in the appropriations a place to put that in. So what happened was, it came back to the mayor's office. They worked at making changes, and you will see them on page three, that deal with the fire department in looking at, is page three? I'm pretty sure it's page three. End of page three and up into page four, that has to do with our first responders and making sure that we had the appropriate equipment that would be needed. These would include patient stretchers, heart monitors, patient transfer chairs, the CPR devices, as well as installing power-loaded systems on the ambulances. And so with that, we have this resolution as a substitute. They have communicated this to the Congresswoman, so she knew that we were making those changes. I just want to add that the way these are listed are in no priority. If I were putting priority, I would have put fire first, but these are not in a priority order. So with that, I would move the substitute. Oh, first reconsideration. I am sorry.
It's all good. First, on the motion to reconsider.
To reconsider.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Now I will move the substitute that I lengthly described just a minute ago.
All right, there is a motion on the floor to adopt the substitute. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, now, yep, now I forgot, this is a three-step process. Now, on the substitute, on the adoption of the substitute, I'm not on the adoption, on the passing of the substitute. Is there further discussion? Seeing and, you did move it, correct?
Yes, I did.
All right. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have item 25, Advent House Outreach Drop-In Center.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. The mayor reached out to us, to Councilmember, for President Hussein and myself, concerning the outreach drop-in center that's located at 601 North Large. This drop-in center had been previously run by the city mission. The city mission, because they were not able to do the staffing, come up with the staffing to be able to run the facility, close the facility. There is definitely a need for this outreach center. In discussions with our HRCS Director and with the Consortium of Care, Advent House has agreed to be the agency that would run that in the resolution. It talks about the fact that Advent House would be the one that would be running the facility. So this is part of a budget transfer out of capital improvement fund of $240,000 to the outreach center. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor to pass the resolution pertaining to the budget amendment. Is there further discussion? Councilman Spata.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. This is, I think it's great that we're doing this standalone. We talked two weeks ago about hero pay extensively and the budget amendment, and we didn't, we didn't talk about it at the front of the meeting, and I thought we were going to, so I missed that opportunity. Is the council amenable to opening up this resolution a little bit wider and appropriating $2 million for premium pay, so that if the deal is settled tonight, tomorrow, or within the next few weeks, the money can go out the door? I'm worrying, I worry that if we wait, then it requires council action to get the payroll processing if it is settled. I don't know who's to blame or where the blame lies, but I'm wondering if the council would entertain amending this particular ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution.
Vice President Wood.
As the maker of the.
Well, my concern all along has been the fact that we were informed that it could be anywhere from now till August. I had asked in the budget resolution that was a budget amendment that was put before us, that we actually say that it would happen within 30 days. The mayor has indicated to me, and I'm sure he, you know, can speak for himself, that this was a holdup by the unions. I have reached out to the unions and had discussions with them, and they do not see that in the same light as what the mayor has. That's why I have been reluctant to move this. One of the things I had suggested to the president was, at the next council meeting, to bring the unions in, to explain to us if they, if there is a holdup, what the holdup is, in order to move that forward. So that's. So that's.
And I appreciate that the August thing concerned me quite a bit when I heard it, and I did, and I, I think it may have been, we don't get the second tranche until August. I think there may have been some conflation there.
You know, yeah.
So I guess, I'm sorry.
Something I learned early on in, in my career is one of the ways to get action is to hold up budget, you know, or a budget amendment in order to get what you need done. Again, these people have been waiting, and I made this argument before, have been waiting for some time to get this. I understand that the mayor has indicated that, you know, they didn't get the final regs until March, and that they had been working diligently on this. Again, I know in talking to the unions, some of them do not believe that they've worked as aggressively as what they could have in order to get this done. So this is, this is where we are at, at this particular point.
And I'll certainly let the president dictate.
Sorry.
Who speaks next, but if I may respond. My big concern, Councilmember Wood, and I appreciate the, holding up the funds to get action taken, is if something does get set on the next two weeks, then we're the ones holding up the funds. So I would, after the president decides what's next, I will move this amendment that I've just passed out, because, you know, I'm a stickler for putting things in writing, so I did. But I will stop there, and then Mr. President.
So do you want to speak to what's in front of us? Councilman Spatafor?
Yes, so what's in front of us is, in addition to the resolution that Councilmember Wood proposed, which removes two million dollars of ARPA funding from our general fund for the current year budget, because we've already determined we don't need those dollars to balance the books, and then creates a separate ARPA fund designated two million dollars for premium pay that we can make effective this evening, so that the premium pay can go out the door if and when the deal is settled. So I would move the amendment.
So that is, that is a, an official motion, sorry. There's a motion on the floor to amend the resolution. Is there further discussion? Vice President Wood.
I would only be amenable to this if there was a clause in there that said that this would be paid out in thirty days.
And I'm okay with that, except I think that this is a negotiation tactic, and we're not the ones leading the labor negoti- not a tactic, this is, this is a negotiation, and we are not the ones negotiating. So I'm worried about that. I mean, if you want to add that to that, I don't think it would be enforceable, because we can't force the money onto someone until the agreement is determined as to how much each person is getting, who's actually eligible. I've had a lot of conversation on this, and I don't want to be the counsel, the one holding up the payment.
And I think we also want to safeguard against it actually being a negotiation tactic. Vice President Wood.
I think you said exactly what I was just going to say, was the, was the fact that I don't want, you know, to have this out there and then have what appears, whether it is, is or not, and I, I know the mayor's biting at the, you know, to say something, but whether it appears or not that this is, you know, the dragging of the feet to get something done. And so that's why, you know, I would like to see some provision in there. And I think if the mayor truly believes that they're doing everything they can as fast as they can, I'm not sure why adding thirty days in there would be something that wouldn't be doable.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor. Mayor Shore is chomping at the bit to say something, so Mayor Shore.
Let me first say, I never said that, that the unions are holding this up. That is, that is not true. What I said was, we are in negotiations and discussions with the unions. We are working with them on identifying who is eligible. We are working with identifying who had work share. We are working with them together. There is a, a letter of, of interest that's being worked on. I'm not placing blame on anyone. I'm not placing blame on the union, I'm not placing blame on our staff. I'm saying this is a conversation and discussion. And it is my hope, it is my intention to have this done as soon as possible. If it doesn't get done, or if the money is not allocated, then nothing happens till August, when the next tranche is allocated. Now, I fully expect this to be done way before August. But I cannot say ten days, fifteen days, thirty days, forty-five days. This is a conversation that is happening between two parties. And when the two parties agree, then the money's issued. If the two parties agree this week or next week, we do not have the authority to issue the dollars to the employees until council approves this. So if we get a deal in the next week, week and a half, then we'll wait. We'll wait until the next council meeting, and we'll ask you again to allocate the dollars. If you don't do it then, then we will hold. Our intention is to get a letter of intent with each of our unions, and the sooner the better. But again, we sent this to you as soon as we had the dollars identified to amend the previous ARPA resolution. What you do with it after that is certainly up to you as the legislative body. But for me, I would think that this would be something that would be approved, and we will allocate it as soon as possible, as soon as we have a letter of intent with each of our bargaining units, which is the collective bargaining, which is a way to collectively bargain.
And I certainly appreciate that. I think the comment from Vice President Wood spoke to the fact, the fact that, as part of our committee of the whole conversation, it was said on, on more than one occasion that what you all were waiting for was the unions to provide the lists. I mean, it was said over and over and over. And it, and that did imply that the ball was in their court. I, I never really understood that candidly. I, I guess I didn't understand, still don't understand, why you all, as the administration, wouldn't work through payroll, you know, with pay stubs, et cetera, to actually create the list and then vet it past the unions. So it almost seems like this is happening in reverse. But, but to be fair, again, that's where that, I believe that comment came from.
I'm happy to have our, our finance staff come up and said that. Now, to be fair, there, it's our, it's our, it's our union, it's our labor negotiator who's working with the unions, but if you want the finance staff to come back up, I wasn't here at Committee of the Whole. We're certainly looking internally to see who received work share, to see who was working, to see what the different qualifications are, to see what the legal qualifications are, because there are legal qualifications. Again, I think Jake or Desiree or Emily can address that, what the legal qualifications are. But again, if we just say, these people get it, then we could have grievances. So we are certainly working with the unions on that. So I, I'll leave it to them, I don't know what they said, because I wasn't here.
Sure, we're going to go Vice President Wood, Councilman Spatafor, and then Jake will, as, as well as, sorry, Mrs. Kirkland will recognize you as well. Vice President Wood.
I, I beg to differ with you, Mayor. We've talked on the phone, and it was during the council meeting when I moved to table this, that you made comments about the fact that the union was the holdup. You, you said the union was the holdup.
If I said that, I apologize, that's incorrect.
Okay, well, then, fine, I, I appreciate your apology, but you did say it.
I, I will look, I will go back and look, because I don't recall that. If I said that, I apologize. We are working with the unions to identify the list.
Okay.
So if I said that, I will go back and look, and I apologize if I said, if I spoke incorrectly.
All right. Second of all, I understand that there are legal requirements. And what I would be looking for is in a whereas clause, that whereas, be it resolved, that the city council is requesting that the mayor make every effort to fulfill the premium pay.
Councilmember Wood, I wrote something.
Wages, I, I'm not sure what the next word should be, within thirty days of the passage of the ordinance. Now, that's a whereas, it's, again, it's not binding, but it makes it abundantly clear where we are with this. And it also gives, it also gives notice to the unions, and I have no problem calling all the unions and telling them that if you're telling us that there's an issue out there, they need to get there to get it settled. I've talked to all of them, so I don't have any, any problem with that.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that between the result, now therefore be it resolved, and that be it finally resolved, be it further resolved, that the city council encourages the premium pay be distributed in the next thirty days.
Okay, I'll take that. Will you take that as, as an amendment?
I will.
To you?
I will.
I think we call that a friendly amendment, thank you. All right, so we do have.
Call it a mostly friendly amendment.
Pardon?
We'll call it a mostly friendly amendment.
There you go, all right.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion to amend on the floor, further discussion, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. All right, and now on the amended resolution. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, sorry, further discussion. Councilman Jackson, that's my fault.
Just briefly, you know, I don't have a problem trying to make things happen, it's just that now we're talking about labor negotiations, and we usually go in a closed session and can't talk about what happens in closed session, I understand. And I know everybody has their different relationships with different unions, but I guess I haven't got reached out to, like, hey, Councilman Jackson, there's a problem here. The problem is, is that, you know, we got these funds we're trying to get, blah, 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 no one's reached out to me. So the way I see it, I, there's not really a problem. And it's just, it's just now we're, you know, bringing resolutions and amendments to deal with things that are usually done in closed session that we all, or not in closed session, but in labor negotiations that we all respect and have a labor negotiator and all these different things. So that's just my, since I can't ever talk about it, what we talked about there, but now it's on discussion now, kind of, in a roundabout way, I'm just saying my concerns of, you know, interfering with sacred labor negotiations that we don't normally do publicly, and here we're doing it. So that's just my thing, thank you.
Vice President Wood.
Unless the mayor wants to contradict me, I have been told repeatedly, this is not part of labor negotiations. And so, and I think he's made that abundantly clear when I have asked, are we using this as part of labor negotiations?
Yeah, and it's, this is a, an intricacy, but it's a letter of intent. We're working with them on a letter of intent on when we issue the dollars, how they are used. So it's not, it's not a collective bargaining, it's not a contract collective bargaining, it's a, a letter of intent that we're working on with them to get the specifics right. It's a, it's an intricacy, but it's correct. It's not a, it's not a, a labor negotiation where we're coming up with a tentative agreement, writing up a contract. It is a, it's like a memorandum of understanding, it's a, it's, it's, it's an agreement, more than a labor negotiation. That's, that's accurate, that's accurate.
And, and I do realize that some of us have different relationships, but it doesn't preclude you from reaching out to any of the leadership in the unions and asking the question.
Right, and I would also contrary, I would also believe that if they wanted something from council or had any concerns, they would also reach, if they needed me, reach this way as well. But I'm not saying there's any problem, it's just that nothing was brought to me except for these few conversations out here.
All right, I think this is a good time to ask Mr. Brower and Mrs. Kirkland, do you have anything to add before we go to Councilman Garza and then we consider the motion?
No.
Okay, I didn't want to bring you down, I didn't want to bring you down under the well for no reason. Councilman Garza.
Thanks, Council President. No, I was going to say, say what Councilwoman Vice President Wood said, that, you know, I did have concerns as well, so I did reach out to the unions.
All right, I appreciate that. And seeing no other discussion on the resolution, the amended resolution for the budget amendment? Yep?
Got it.
Got it. And you do have the language, ladies and gentlemen, in front of you, and it is the second to last, be it resolved, it's actually the be it further resolved, and as Councilman Spatafor spelled it out earlier, that the city council encourages the premium pay be distributed in the next thirty days.
And I just want to clarify that what's in front of you has the right, be it resolved, but not the numbers, so you're going to have to read them together.
Be it further resolved.
Chris has got everything he needs to make it right, but we all agree, we're voting on, okay.
Yes, everybody knows what they're voting on. Yeah. Sure, Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm just, want some clarity, I mean, it says encourages, so that's no guarantee, correct? I mean, there's no way to guarantee that the payment isn't within thirty days?
An appropriation is not a mandate to spend in any situation.
Okay, thank you.
And there is no requirement for you to support this. Vice President Wood.
And I would ask, and, Mr. President, and for every meeting until the thirty days is up, or it might even be longer, that the question be asked where we are on the negotiations and seeing that this is taken care of.
All right, so you guys know the question's coming, right? You're going to be able to respond to it, okay, fantastic. I think we might be ready to vote, folks. All right, so on the motion with regard to the resolution on the budget amendment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government.
Point of order, Mr. Clerk? I think we just approved the amendment, but not the actual resolution.
No, we actually voted on the, we actually did a vote, I'm sorry, we actually did move that first, then we moved, I'm sorry, then we voted, we stopped for conversation, sorry, and then.
Okay.
That makes sense. Yeah, okay, so we actually did have to act.
Okay, speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, that's the yellow form in the back. If you can hand that in within the next minute, we'll get you up here and give you your three minutes. In the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move that all items be considered being read in full and that proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have items from the city clerk minutes, the boards, and commissions.
Place on file.
And fireworks display for the lug nuts.
City operations.
Fireworks display for Independence Day.
City operations.
Items from the mayor, two items relative to the principal shopping district special assessment.
City operations.
Commitment to climate protection and environmental justice.
EDI.
Grant acceptance for city innovation ecosystems.
Ways and Means.
Appointment of Lucas Lalonde to the Arts Board.
Development and Planning.
Appointment of Isaac Francisco to the Park Board.
City Operations.
Appointment of Kat Rathbun to the LEDC, and I'm sorry, that should also include Tifa and LBRA.
Yeah, DMP.
And reappointment of Shelley Boyd to the same three boards.
Development and Planning.
Grant application, trust fund, Michigan National Natural Resources Trust Fund.
Ways and Means.
Two items relative to the local development finance authority tax increment financing for the regional smart zone.
Both will go to Committee of the Whole.
Budget amendment that was just adopted for Advent House.
Place on file.
Grant acceptance for recycling market development.
Ways and Means.
Items from the retirement system board and, board of trustees, developments in securities issued by Russian companies.
Place on file.
And from the police and fire retirement system, a similar notification.
Yeah, place on file.
Communications and petitions, an affidavit of disclosure from Darren Dykens of the Lansing Police Department.
Ethics Board.
And motion of excused absence.
Do we have a motion? Councilman Spatafor has moved to excuse Councilwoman Spitzley. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And remarks by council members.
All right, council members, all right, Chris, I'm sorry, Clerk's room.
The mayor, remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Just, just one reminder, now that we've done the, the premium pay, there are still other things that were small catch-all things in the budget amendment, and my request would be that now that I think the controversial piece is done, all right, that's fair. I mean, I, my request would certainly be that you take that off the table at the next meeting and the other pieces get done, but that's just my request.
All right, we appreciate that.
To public comment on city government-related matters, we have Jim Harkin, followed by Michael Mercer.
Jim Harkin, three-one-five Bingham. Been a long time, I guess that's what I have to say. I pulled this chart off the internet, and it is a, it is a chart of the United States Department of, of. Department of Commerce has a lab in Hawaii whose specific duty is to monitor the atmospheric carbon dioxide. They started this in 1960, and it's continuing now to all the way through now, it looks like forever. And it's a very simple chart to understand. What they do is they take a, a sample of the atmosphere of 1 million parts, I don't know how they do that, and then they analyze those parts, and in this specific case, it's carbon dioxide is what they're looking for. And I'm going to just briefly go through this right now. In 1960, when they first started, they had a analysis, and in the analysis was 320 parts per million, and the way they do it is so nice, because that comes out to 0.03% of the atmosphere was carbon dioxide. And then going all the way up to 2021, it is about 430, it increased to 430 parts per million, or 0.404%, a very, very small amount. So over the 62 years, if you subtract the lower one, 320, from 420, it comes out to 0.1% or 1/100 of a percent that carbon dioxide increased. That, in your math classes, when I used to go to have these math classes, that is such a small amount that the instructor would say, just put a zero in for that. So effectively, if you say that, carbon dioxide over the last 62 years did not even increase, it increased zero. Now you can contrast that with people like on the, like John Kerry, who's the Department of Energy head, Al Gore, our ex-Vice President, this Cozio Cortez woman, they're all going out and saying, carbon dioxide is increasing, going to cause global warming, the North and South Pole's going to melt, we're going to have the oceans rise, based on nothing. It has to be based on nothing but lies, because the facts of these scientists say that over 62 years, and it's all documented, and there had to be about a dozen of them, saying that it did not increase one bit. So now we've got our president.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can I go on a little bit or no?
Your, your three minutes is up. So next we have Michael Mercer, followed by Jessica Behrens.
I happen to have been told by somebody who works where I happen to work, that over on Norman and Ray Street in First Ward, just like a block north of Mount Hope, where Deering Deere used to be before they moved to their new location, that pothole there is over a foot deep, and you have a cone in there to warn people, but you're not taking care of that darn pothole. And I suggest you guys get these potholes taken care of all through the darn city because all the damage to the vehicles, and if you guys can't, you know, get these repaired, I think you should be reliable to pay for the cost of damage on vehicles, because the people of Lansing pay taxes to take care of the darn roads, and you're not doing nothing about the roads. And same over here on Deerfield and Glenbrook, where, you know, that house that you've been talking about for the past couple of months, look at those potholes right there. It's terrible. I would hate to drive in a subdivision looking terrible like that. Thank God, I don't live here in the darn city of Lansing. I'm living in the Delhi area. But anyhow, while I was over there taking pictures of that, you know, road there on Deerfield, the, I heard some noise coming, it sounded like motorcycles and all that, and here, I had my picture ready to take a, you know, or my camera to take a picture of those potholes, and then these two came flying on down Glenbrook. You see the four wheeler, he's doing a wheelie, he has to be going probably 45, 50 mile an hour, same for that little motorcycle there. And just think of a pedestrian walk out into the road to their vehicle on the driver's side, they're going to get run right into. Same for a young child not knowing they got to pay attention to the traffic, and they were, you know, not mean walking down the road, but they're going to get hit. You got to do something about the subdivision over there in your ward, Hussein. And then last, about that pool over there at Morris Park, that picture I took here back in like 2008, when it was still open, of course, look at it now, it is in terrible shape, and you're getting this $25 million from the federal government, us hardworking taxpayers, not putting no money towards repairing that and fixing it. I suggest you do something, because it's stupid waiting. It's too late now, it would have been much cheaper before the pandemic, but you waited and now it's too late. Maybe you should do what they did years ago here in Lansing, over at Krieger Park, there on Mount Hope, to get a grant.
Thank you.
State of Michigan DNR and get it fixed.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jessica Behrens.
I just wanted to come up here really quick and give a huge thank you to the city clerk's office for the opportunity to intern with them for the semester. The time feels like it's gone so fast, probably because I've learned so much and I've really enjoyed everything that I've worked on. A year ago, I was pretty lost on what I wanted to do as far as after I graduated, and this experience has been a really nice eye-opener to what I want to go into as far as working in government, and I'm truly excited to take everything I've learned into my future as I graduate. And I also want to thank council as well, because, you know, seeing this every week I've come to council meetings, it's just been interesting to see everything, so I just wanted to thank you, some positivity, I guess, we can end off on.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with no other business before the body, we are adjourned at 9:18.